I'm Steve Bowske, the opinion editor, and with me today are Dan Sweeney, the deputy opinion editor, and Pat Beal.
Good morning.
A longtime journalist, a resident of Palm Beach County. And so we all provide different perspectives and experiences and ask about these questions. My first question, and thanks for the questionnaires. My first question is very biographical. I'm going to begin with you, Angela Burns. Tell us, keep your remarks to a minute, minute and a half if you can, please. But tell us about your background and what it is about your background that makes you the best qualified candidate for this office.
Good morning, and thanks, thank you again. My name is Angela Burns, and I am a 58-year resident of Delray Beach. I've taught public schools at Palm Beach County School District for the last 34 years, working with the community, affecting change in many residents. Most of my students are now adults with their own children. And I have been active in the community since I was 19 years old, working to help make change and make people's lives better in Delray Beach. I remember in the 80s, my husband and I fought for land regulations that were being imposed when eminent domain came about. So I've been active in the community, working with different local organizations. As a school board district member, I have served as a union rep for many years, negotiating contracts and salaries for our teachers that work so hard to change lives in our community. I am also the chair of our, the SAC Committee at Village Academy for the last eight, nine years. It's a government-run meeting. And so I've just been very active in the community, and I think that I have the trust of the community. I walk the talk. I affect lives, and I'm trusted. I think that, you know, with my experience as a teacher and a mother, you know, I have the commitment, I have the experience, just educating from zero to adults. I've taught adult ESOL, I've taught all children of all ages and adults as well. So my experience is just being with the people and understanding their struggles.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Burns. Angie Gray, the same question to you, please. You have the floor for a couple of minutes. Tell us about your background, tell us about your biographical, your life story, and why you're the best candidate.
Okay, my name is Angie Gray, and I'm a candidate for Delray Beach City Commission, seat four. And you know, seat four is an open seat. Commissioner Johnson will be term limited out. But let me tell you a little bit more about me. I'm a 47-year resident of the city of Delray Beach. I've served previously on not only just city boards, but county boards as well. I've been actively involved in our community for over 14 years. I'm a previous Delray Beach City Commissioner. I served from 2009 to 2014, and served as a vice mayor 2011 to 2012. Experience really does matter. I currently serve on the Community Redevelopment Agency Board.
Okay, did she?
Yeah, she's frozen.
Okay.
Being cognizant of everyone's time, Steve, if you had questions lined up for Ms. Burns, why don't we fire away, and we'll circle back to Ms. Gray.
I do, yes. Hopefully Angie Gray can, sometimes when your image freezes, you can still have, you still have audio. So we'll allow you to finish your statement, Angie, and but we'll keep the progress and keep the discussion moving.
And if you can hear this, please, please log out and try to log back in.
Yeah, log out, log out and log in. Good, good, thanks for saying that, Dan, very much. Which I think she's done, yep. Angela Burns, as Angie Gray said, Shirley Johnson, the incumbent, is turned out. She can't run again.
I got disconnected, I guess, and I don't know where.
Okay, well, just pick up where you left off. You were talking about the fact that you were a member, you were and are, I think, a member of the CRA Board in Delray.
Okay, yes, I served on a Delray Beach Community Redevelopment Urgency Board currently since 2019, I'm sorry, 2018, and the vice chair. I've been the vice chair since 2019. I also currently serve on the Solid Waste Authority Small Business Advisory Board, and I've been a member of that since 2019. And I previously served on the Community Redevelopment Agency from 2007 to 2009. I'm a former member of the National Leagues of Cities and a former board member of the Palm Beach County Leagues of Cities. I also previously served as a board member of the Palm Beach County Healthcare District Board while implementing, expanding our dental program. I am a former small business, successful small business owner of top-notch beauty spa and suites, and I currently own Graco Construction and Related Services, a very successful business. And I'm a Realtor. I am a Realtor with Reliant Realty. I'm also a proud member of the NABWIGS National Association of Black Women in Construction. And so I am running, I am the best candidate for this job because of my experiences. I just listed all my involvement with the city and the county, I'm sorry, time up?
No, that's, yes, that's okay. I appreciate that, but I'm going to stay with you for a minute, Angie Gray. As you, as you said, the reason this seat is open is that Shirley Johnson, the incumbent, is turned out.
Yes.
And this is seat, seat four in Delray. My question, my question is a little bit about Shirley Johnson, who's departing. As was reported at the time, Shirley Johnson actually made the motion to terminate the city's lease with Old School Square, which has been a highly controversial decision. And it's gone into lots of ugly litigation. We keep hearing there's more lawsuits even coming. It's not resolved. But my question to you, Angie Gray, is would you have supported, as Shirley Johnson did, would you have supported or opposed breaking that lease with Old School Square, and why?
Um, I probably would have agreed with breaking the lease only because of the fact that as a Realtor, I believe that this is a tenant landlord dispute. I think that they could have been handled a little differently, it could have been a little bit more input, it would have helped the city in that manner, because everyone would have been able to understand what was going on and what, what has happened, and not feel like they didn't have any input. I also think that the Old School Square had a part to play in it as well, because they weren't really forthcoming with their financials, their documents, the plans that, I mean, different things that we were requesting as far as documents that concerned, documents that we were requesting from other nonprofits as well. So I was not on the board at the time, I didn't really have, you know, a lot of say or anything into it, but from what I see and what I...
Lost the signal again, okay. She'll come back. Ms. Burns, the same question to you, and that is, would you have done what Shirley Johnson did and voted to break the lease with Old School Square, and why?
Well, I don't think that I would have voted to break the lease, especially because of the lack of transparency and the lack of public input. I mean, you know, it was definitely something, in my opinion, that was handled wrong, because when you have thousands of people upset and wondering what's going on, and you know, as, as a city commission, it's, it's a responsibility to be upfront and open and transparent with the taxpayers so that, you know, we know what's going on. And, you know, public input, that's very important, you know. Just sometimes when you just understand, even if the decision is to terminate, you know, the transparency would have made, made a big difference, and people having a voice in it would have made a big difference.
Okay, let me ask a follow-up question, if I may, please. So thank you for that very clear answer. But this, these lingering perceptions of financial irregularities, that the OSS Board was not forthcoming with the city, the city is giving OSS much of its operating money for $900,000 a year, some years. And now we're finding out, we heard from one of the commissioners in another interview, that the city supported asking the federal government to investigate what happened to the PPP, you know, the pandemic loan money that OSS, the Old School Square got during COVID-19. Do you share the concerns, Ms. Burns, that OSS has not been leveling with the public as to how they spent their money?
Well, yeah, I think that on both ends, when you're, when you're asked to provide documents, but I think that OSS entered into a legal situation. So, you know, when you're into a legal situation, then you, you do what, go by the advice of your attorneys. So, you know, I'm, I'm not at liberty to say who should have done something. I think that's a legal matter. And the way that the whole incident happened, the procedure that it happened caused some of these things not to be forthcoming, in my opinion. So I would just say that I would have to wait until the litigation is done. I know that when things happen, you know, you're told not to say, not to provide information because it's an ongoing case. So, you know, my, my thought on that is that whatever they were advised legally, so that everything can be done decent and order, then that's what they should have followed through with.
Okay. Ms. Gray, I'm going to go back to you for a second, please. This is a very important distinction in this race and in this city. And this is a very important election, but during the time you, your signal was interrupted, Ms. Burns made it clear to us, and she probably has at other forums, Ms. Burns does not agree with you. She would not have voted to break the lease with Old School Square. So, Ms. Gray, you're the only candidate in this race who supports breaking the lease with Old School Square, and I want to give you another brief opportunity to tell us, you know, why your position, in your opinion, is the right position.
Well, my opinion is the right opinion because of the fact that I have to be fiscally responsible, and I'm speaking from the CRA part of it as well. We gave over $900,000, years, millions of dollars to Old School Square, as we do to other nonprofits. And we are responsible fiscally for the taxpayers' dollars. And so when we ask for the documentation and they're not forthcoming with it, then we have to protect our dollars, we have to protect the public interest, and we have to protect and, and just be fair about it, because that's what we would have done with any other organization. We fund several nonprofits, and we all ask for the same document.
The perception has lingered now for almost two years. The perception has lingered that this was kind of a bit of a, I'm struggling with the right words, but it was done without adequate public notice. There was an agenda item that said, I think, something like a discussion of an interim audit of Old School Square, something to that effect. No one anticipated that the city was going to vote to break the lease that night. So that there's questions and criticism being aimed at the three members of the, of the commission, and that would be Mayor Shelley Petrollia, Commissioner Julie Casal, and Commissioner Shirley Johnson, who voted to break the lease. What do you say, Ms. Gray, about the lingering criticism of how the city handled this?
Well, again, I do believe that the city could have handled it in a better manner. I think they could have been, you know, have more input from the community, maybe have a couple of more meetings. I mean, I think that that would be, would have been the right thing to do, especially now knowing that the community didn't really understand what was going on. So I think that it would have really been a win-win for the city if they would have had more open communication and more input from the public. And then the public, they would have been able to be, go along with, or being able to have the information that they had. I think that so often, we, we, and I was elected official before, believed that the, you know, that people just understand what we're talking about, or, and they don't understand that we have been going through some of these issues for years. And so I think it's very important to make sure that we have the input so that people can hear it from them. And I think it would have benefited the three that voted to get rid of the lease to actually have that, but that's in hindsight.
All right. I'm going to open the floor for questions for either Pat Beal or Dan Sweeney. Go ahead, Dan, you had a hand up? Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Gray, on your, on your questionnaire, we ask, and we, you know, we ask this of all candidates, A, have you ever been party to a lawsuit, including bankruptcy or foreclosure? And B, have you ever been charged with, charged with or convicted of a misdemeanor or felony? You put no for that second question, but that's not entirely true, is it? You were found not guilty in court, but you were charged actually in relation to your previous time on the Delray Beach City Commission, were you not?
Um, I was never charged. There was complaints, I mean, I was charged, but was not convicted of any charges. All the complaints, it was filed, but it was filed during the campaign season. There was no findings, and this is not uncommon for people to make complaints. Unfortunately, I have gone through the court system, but the election was over before the findings came out, which was no findings, all complaints had been dropped. So when you mentioned any charges, yes, I was charged, but I was not convicted of any charges, so that's why I answered no.
Okay, I just wanted to, wanted to clear that up. Pat?
Yeah. Angela, you had, I believe you had noted in responses to our questionnaire, concerns about a food desert in the northwest, southwest area of the SET. And I wondered if you could expand on that a little bit, the lack of grocery stores? And, and Angie, you know, as a CRA member, if you could also address the necessity, the hurdles, and what, you know, the CRA and/or the city has done, you know, to, you know, to help that issue.
Okay, thank you for asking that. So I believe that, you know, your questionnaire was, what are the, one of the overlooked issues? I think that the northwest, southwest side of our community, which is called the SET, for years has just been overlooked. And, you know, in this community, we've watched project after project be approved with nothing happening in our community. And as I stated, you know, we have a fresh food desert here. You know, the SET Transformation Plan, which was ignored by our commission and the CRA, was just ignored and disrespected. People participated and spoke for years through a community planning process that was funded by tax dollars. And it's the responsibility of the electors to honor the process and not push it to the side. It was funded by the CRA, cost over $80,000 of taxpayers' dollars. It was facilitated, it was an updated plan from the West Atlantic Redevelopment Plan, and it was just overlooked. The community was disrespected. And, you know, in a previous forum that we had, you know, my opponent said that she didn't need a plan to know what happened, needs to happen in the community, that she can see what happens. Well, she also stated that when you have taxpayers' dollars, you have to be responsible. Well, these were taxpayer dollars as well. When you have taxpayer, you are responsible and you need a plan. You know, I taught school for years. I know how to teach, but I had to have a plan. You have to have a plan. It is one of the arms of accountability. So you can't just go willy-nilly without a plan, and we had a plan. We had a solid plan that was community-led, that stakeholders from many communities put together, and our plan was ignored, and the, the community was disrespected.
Angie, would you like to, to address that?
Yes, so we do have a plan in place. The SET Transformation Plan was not passed, I was not a part of that. But when I mentioned the fact that we, I don't need a plan, I know what my community needs. I hear and I'm out there, I'm listening to the community, and to tell you how much I know that what my community needs, and that's the community she's talking about. And by the way, the city did pass a plan that we are following, it's the West Atlantic Redevelopment Plan, and we're following that. But I didn't really need a plan going in, because when I first got there, we had millions of, 92% of our budget was going to our core downtown. That's where all the money was going to. And then once we got on the board, and I got on the board, I knew, I was a small business owner, I owned and built my own building, 3,000 square foot of space. I know what we needed as far as economic development, places and spaces for people to come in and open up entrepreneur businesses. And I know that we need affordable housing. And for that, we've been working on that. These are one of the biggest issues, I'm a Realtor, and I know how important housing is. That was a part of the plan, economic development was part of the plan. Being on the CRA, we had built Carver Isles, we're working on the Cove Isles with rental, rental apartments with the Housing Authority. We just gave them over $1 million to do that. We've done Quarry Isles, Carver, Carver Square. So we're, we're doing the things, that's what I meant by that. But now, we have, in the last five years, the community that she's talking about, which is southwest neighborhood, which I still own property in, is, we have 95% of those dollars going back into the northwest, southwest neighborhood. We are proud of that. We're building, we've given grant dollars, including to her failed business. She had a business that opened up last year. It was open for 10 months, the CRA gave $67,000 to her business, which closed up because she wasn't paying her rent, the sheriff had to go and lock the doors down. So yes, that's, that, I mean, I know what the community needs. So what we had was, we had, we did, we put in place buildings. We are building buildings on the northwest side, where we're making sure that we have entrepreneurs that can come in, rent space, that they cannot afford on Atlantic Avenue, also on southwest Fifth Avenue. Economic development, housing, all those issues we have touched on. And I am very active in my community, I listen, I know how to hit the ground running from day one, I have the experience, the qualification, and the institutional knowledge. Listen, in the next year, we're going to lose possibly four out of the five commissioners that are there now. We don't, that means that there will be a new commission, we don't have time for learning curves, we're getting ready to go through overdevelopment, and we're going through overdevelopment in our community. We got traffic and parking issues that we need to solve right now. We have sea level rising, all these things are very, very important, affordable housing. I'm working on that. We're doing it. I don't have to start over and, and learn from day one. From day one, I can hit the ground running, thank you.
So Angela, could you respond to the $57,000 grant?
What the, my son opened a business of which I was a partner in Studio 404, and unfortunately, he had a lot of setbacks, had to open during COVID, a chef that he had hired had got called to active duty. And he did sacrifice much for that business, and they did receive funds from that business. I won't even comment on the not paying the rent part, because the sheriff did not have to come and lock the doors, but I'm not even going to go there. I will just address as well, the, you know, the CRA budget, which my opponent sits on, does not have one single dollar designated for affordable housing in the budget that, that, that was just approved. So, you know, as I said, you know, lots of things said, but yet to, to be fruition.
Okay. Is there anything more, Angie Gray, you want to say about that $57,000 to amplify what you said a minute ago?
Oh, yes, $67,000, I'm sorry. It was $67,000. Like I said, the company, they were open for 10 months, the CRA didn't even get a, couldn't even do a ribbon cutting. That's how much they despise the CRA, but yet still, they took our money. And, you know, there's some other things that are, that I could say, but I didn't want to get into bashing, she wanted to bash me, so, you know, I want to put that out. I'm not into pat-bashing.
Okay. Let me, let's keep the conversation going in a productive manner here. I want to bring up another subject that you clearly, the two of you do not quite agree on, and that is the style and substance of the governing of Shelley Petrollia, the mayor of Delray Beach. Now, let's understand the point, I think you made, Angie, a minute ago, which is that you're looking at a tremendous amount of turnover coming up on the city, at City Hall in the coming years because of term limits, that four of the five commissioners may be leaving. It's a five-person governing board, and we report and editorialize in depth on a lot of cities up and down the Gold Coast. I don't think we see as many three to two votes anyplace as we see in Delray Beach. We see a lot of three to two votes. What does that tell you? That tells you that every vote, every seat is extremely important, because the change, the change of one vote can alter the dynamics just like that. I'm paraphrasing here, I've got the questionnaires before me, but Angie Gray basically said that Shelley Petrollia has been a force for sensible growth and for reasonable development. And Ms. Burns, you described Shelley as a quote, polarizing figure. So I want to ask Angie Gray, if you, what you think about Angela Burns's characterization of the mayor as polarizing?
Well, I mean, she's right to her, her opinion. Shelley Petrollia is a really strong mayor, a really strong-willed person, and she has been an advocate for our city and for limited growth. And I think that sometimes on the commission, our fellow, our fellow commissioners feel the same way, they're strong-headed, and they value, and their opinions are, are strong for what they want as well. So I think that you will have that bump. I bring to the table, I want to bring consensus to the table. I've worked with Shelley, I've worked with all the commissioners there, and so I will be that voice that bring that consensus together, and hopefully, we could get out of that more of a 5-0 vote instead of. But diversity and different opinions is always welcome, we need that on a commission.
So, Ms. Burns, I think what I just heard from Angie Gray is that, for the most part, Shelley Petrollia has been a positive force for the city, especially as relates to growth and development. What do you think about that?
Well, you know, I stick to my comment about being polarized. She is a very strong, strong-willed man, mayor. You know, she's not perfect, no one is, and she has a hard job. She has a hard job as a mayor, and I, I appreciate her service to this city. However, I do not agree with a lot of the things that, that she says. It's, it's a very strong mayor, and I think she's very influential as well. I'm an independent thinker, and I would depend on and count on the community. Delray was built, I, I've been here since I was eight years old. We were built on community input, everybody joining in, and not just, you know, if I think it's supposed to be blue, it's, that's it, it's going to be blue. But I can work with Shelley Petrollia and anyone on that dais. I've worked for, for 34 years with school district. I don't think you can find one person in those 34 years, and I've been in many leadership roles, that will say there's ever been a problem with Angela Burns and personality, because I understand what the goals are. And I don't put personalities into any kind of decision-making that I make. We identify the goals, and we're there to solve problems for the community. So personalities aside, what is best for the community, and what does the community, how does the community feel about that? Not, you know, disrespecting people, having personal vendettas against people, but to, you know, give people a seat at the table and let them voice their opinion. They're taxpayers, they are entitled to an opinion, they are entitled. You know, one of the things I heard earlier was, you know, people don't really understand and know, well, that's the whole purpose of transparency. When you explain things, then we know. And that is the commission's responsibility as well, to be transparent. So if there's something that the public doesn't understand, let's explain it so that they do understand. Not everybody's going to get their way all the time, but, you know, if you just listen to and just have your voice, and don't feel disrespected, you know, you, you can, you can live with decisions that are not always going to go your way.
Okay.
You said a lot there about not feeling disrespected, about making decisions without carrying out personal vendettas. Does that suggest that the current commission is in fact not listening to residents, disrespecting residents, or carrying out personal vendettas against perceived enemies?
Well, I filed to run for this seat in June, and I have met so many people, talked to people, so that people will get to know who I am. And there is a culture of fear in Delray, sadly. And the two themes, well, three themes that, that was consistent was fear. People are afraid to even talk to you in public. People are afraid to say anything because of fear of what's going to happen to them. And then, no public input, no public input. That was another theme. And then the, the last thing was, of course, maintenance of our city. But absolutely, I mean, the stories that I heard, it's just sad that, and we can do better than this in Delray. We have a jewel of a, of a city, and we can do better. People should not live in fear that they can't talk to certain people in public, that they can't, that if they come to the commission with a problem, or they come to the, that they're going to be denied because of some personal vendetta that you have against me, or something that you don't like about me, and not necessarily, you know, attention to the project itself. How is it going to benefit the community? So, you know, that's, that's, that's my experience. Like, like I said, I've met hundreds of people that I didn't know, and that's the theme that I get, which was surprising to me.
I want to just piggyback on Dan Sweeney's question with you, Angie. I want to just piggyback on Dan Sweeney's question with you, Angie Gray. Do you feel a culture of fear in Delray Beach? Are there people afraid to speak to you in public?
Um, no, I think that, listen, when I'm out there talking to different people and I've been out there for a long time, even when I wasn't a city commissioner, after I was a city commissioner, there was a period of time that I was not. And I was still doing the work, still in our community, still serving on boards in the county and the city. And the common thread that I hear and what the citizens are concerned about, resident business owners, is overdevelopment. I hear that. I hear affordable housing. I hear traffic and parking. I hear about our aging infrastructure. Those are the things that I'm concerned about, which are the same issues that my constituents and our residents, our business owners and our property owners are concerned about. And those are the issues that I'm going to be held on. Should we have public input put? Yes, I believe that we should have more public input. I was on a commission when we had a lot of charrettes. We had a lot of town hall meetings. Can we be a little bit more forthcoming with some of those things? I think will add back and people will start to feel again that they are part of the city. And that's what I will be doing once I become city commissioner in the next month.
Okay. I want to ask you both about a particular project that was approved by the Delray Beach City Commission and how you both would have dealt with this decision and voted on it. The project is known as Aura Delray Beach, A-U-R-A. And I hope I'm characterizing it correctly. It is a multi-story, mixed-use, but mostly residential complex, Atlantic Avenue and Congress. Lot of debate about whether or not there was enough workforce housing. It's a two-hundred-and-ninety-two unit complex. Adding significant amount of traffic to that part of the city. It's a bit, if I'm describing it correctly, it's just a little bit west of downtown. And so I want to ask both of you, is that a good project and would you have voted for it? Would you have done anything differently? I'm gonna begin with you, Ms. Burns.
Um, I think that I would have voted for it. I think that the, the, the project fell within the parameters of the LDRs. I think that, you know, there were no, it wasn't, they followed the guidelines. I mean, we have a comp plan. We have the LDRs. And I think that project fell within those, within those parameters. Should, do we want more low-low income? Absolutely. But I don't think the project violated our current laws and rules.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that answer. Ms. Gray, the same question to you, please.
Okay, um, listen, I don't know the plan inside and out of the plan. I do know that there's a lot of units. I would, I would tell you that while I was out, everyone is asking me about that project because they're concerned about the traffic. And our infrastructure is already built, so we need to really be real careful about moving forward with different projects and making sure that the traffic counts are what they need to be for the project. So I'm not really sure about whether I would have approved that particular project because I haven't had it before me. I wasn't on the commission to see it. But I do know there's a growing concern of overdevelopment. And so to bring in more affordable housing, I think that we need to make sure that some of our projects that we really do make sure that they're true, affordable housing and not just a high-end workforce housing.
All right, all right. I want to stay with you, Ms. Gray, for one second. Because you have mentioned forcefully in this interview that overdevelopment you see as a problem. So I want you to sort of verbally take me on a tour of the Delray Beach and point to a project. Point to something that the city commission has approved and you say, "That was a mistake. That project never should have been approved." What is it? Where is it?
Okay, well, the Atlantic, the Atlantic project right there is at the basin of the bridge. I was on that board and went and approved some of that project. But in approving it, it took about probably ten, ten or fifteen years to get that project approved. It has changed over before the final, before the final plans. And, but, you know, I have learned from that, from that project, that we need to make sure, Atlantic Avenue is narrow. It's only two lanes. There is a concern, we're concerned about the traffic going into the, into the neighborhoods and making sure that they have enough parking. And so, yeah, that is one of the projects that I think that in looking back over, you know, trying to get over the bridge, when the bridge, I've been there. When the bridge goes up, the traffic is backed up. And I was just going over to the bridge yesterday to another forum. And I was backed up and all the stores and everything is not, haven't even opened yet. So I'm fearful of that, but we have our infrastructure that's in place. We have to make sure that we're not building things that should not be built and they should not be built in certain locations.
Ms. Burns, what is your opinion about that project that she's discussing right there at the base of the bridge?
I, I think that is one huge, yes, project that was, and I think, as she said, I think she voted on it more than once. But it is a huge project and it's been taking up a lot of time. We got the park closed, traffic, huge project. However, I don't believe that we have, that our community is overdeveloped. Maybe downtown is overdeveloped. I think that there's much more to our community than downtown and that we need to just adjust some of the development so that we can make sure that we keep our, our city a beautiful place to live and work. And also just make sure that these projects are matching our comprehensive plan. We have a plan. We must use that plan. We, I can't stress enough. We have a plan that lays out our LDRs and everything. We need to, that the projects that we build matches the plan and that the, whatever we're developing matches the neighborhood, the citizens in the neighborhood, and that there's public input as to what goes into that on development.
Okay. Let me survey Pat Beal and Dan Sweeney again for possible question.
I'm okay. See, Pat, did you have anything?
Okay. I'll keep, I'll keep going here. There's an organization in Delray Beach called Friends of Delray. Angie Gray, are you familiar with an organization called Friends of Delray?
I am.
And are they, are they taking a side or will they take a side in this race? And tell me about that organization.
Um, yeah, I don't know if they'll take a side. I know that they're very active on Facebook and I, you know, lately I haven't been able to be on there as much with campaigning. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what side they would take. I would assume that they will probably take Angela Burns's side because my stance on Old School Square. And, you know, but they have the right to do that.
Right. Angela, do you know about Friends of Delray and tell us a little bit more about who they are and?
Yeah. Friends of Delray, I do know them. They are a group of concerned citizens that brings information to our community through their website. They have podcasts and they, as far as taking a side, I'm not sure if they're gonna take a side at all. I just know that they are very concerned citizens about all things that happen in Delray. And they bring that information to our community. They are very passionate about Old School Square and what happened there. But as far as taking a side, I'm not, I'm not, as a group, I'm not sure if they're gonna take a side.
Okay. Yeah, I brought it up because the Friends of Delray includes, among other people, former city commissioner Jim Chard. Some people in, certainly people in the construction and development industry in Delray Beach. Their mailings talk about protecting and preserving, quote, "quality of life." That means different things to different people, right?
Absolutely.
Let's talk about another endorsement or another entity group, the police and firefighter unions. Have they endorsed in this race or will they, Angie Gray?
Um, I believe they endorsed my opponent, you know.
Okay. And, well, good for you, Ms. Burns, if you got the police and fire union endorsement. Why, why are the police and fire unions supporting you?
I think too, the police and fire realize that I am a committed person. I say what I mean and I mean what I say. And they know that I'll work hard to make sure that they have the resources that they need to, to do their jobs and do their jobs well. Public safety is one of my first concerns. And I want to work hard to make sure that they do that and that they have competitive salaries. A lot of our officers leave our Delray and go to other municipalities or the sheriff department because of the pension or competitive salaries. So, you know, you get what you pay for. So I will be working hard as a commissioner to make sure that they are fully funded and that they have the resources that they need to protect the citizens in our community.
Ms. Burns, I want to return to Old School Square for just a moment because you were critical of the way that whole situation was handled. If you're elected to the Delray Beach City Commission and if it's, if it were legally possible, would you be in favor of returning and restoring the not-for-profit group that was running it before and put them back in control of Old School Square?
Again, I think that needs a community conversation. I think that to save taxpayers' money in this time of, you know, rising costs of everything, I don't think that we need to put a burden on city, on the, on the community taxpayers if we don't have to. I think that a nonprofit provides the funding or the cushion that a city would need in order to run that. So if they would be, who knows if they would even be willing to go back and run that entity again. However, I think that, again, community input. I would be willing to sit down and listen to what they had to say and what they had to offer. Yes, definitely.
Okay. Ms. Gray, what do you think of that approach? That she'd be willing to sort of at least entertain a discussion with the old nonprofit board?
Right. I mean, I, listen, I mean, we all love Old School Square. We know that Old School Square have had some amazing programs and some amazing events and things there. They, I would like to see them work with the administration that's there, the DDA. And the DDA is in charge of that. Now we look forward to moving forward with the programmings and events and things that they have going on. Old School Square never went dark. Of course, the theater did because of the fact that it was just, you know, torn up. It was being remodeled. So, you know, that's where that over-year comes from where they say that, you know, it hasn't been utilized, but that's not true. It has been utilized. The field house continues. The events and programs are continuing to go on. And we, now we just did the reopening of the Cornell Theater, which is exciting. So I, we do still have some value in the people that work with Old School Square. And I would not like to see them going anywhere, but it would have to be up underneath the new nonprofit, the DDA. I would love to see that. Also, to go back real quick to the police and fire issue. I mean, the police and fire are being funded in our city. I support the police and fire all the way. But I want to make sure that when I'm elected on day one, I need to make sure that the city manager addresses a long-term plan so that we could come into compliance with our pensions. Our pensions are underfunded. We cannot afford it. We are not sustainable. And we need to come into compliance quickly and we need to have a plan for that. Thank you.
Ms., very quickly, I'll get to you in just a second, Pat. Ms. Burns, is Angela, is Angie Gray right? I'll re-characterize her answer in the question the way I'll ask it. And that is that maybe Delray Beach has been a little bit too generous to their police and firefighters and you've got this ticking fiscal time bomb of an unfunded pension liability. Is it true?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they've been over-generous to it. The pension fund is being monitored by the same attorneys, by the same actuaries as the general pension. And I think that, you know, I'm not sure what year it was when Delray opted, let officers opt out to retire with year eighteen and they gave them two. They were supposed to pay back into the fund and they never did. That was a promise to the police that they were gonna pay back into the fund and they never paid back into the fund. So, you know, yes, we need to look at all of the pensions, police included, and maybe look at some different investments. The economy is not good right now. Interest rates are low. So maybe there are some other investments, some sure investments that can be invested in. But I don't think they've been over-generous. Not at all.
Ms. Gray, what do you say to what you've just heard from Ms. Burns?
Well, I say that they are clearly underfunded. We are not in compliance and we need to do something about that. If she doesn't know that they're underfunding, then that's a problem. And that's where experience matters.
I do know that they're seventy-four percent funded. They're not a hundred percent funded. But the question was, do I think that they were, we were over-generous? And no, I do not. They are seventy-four percent funded, which is not a hundred percent. But as I said, they are still, they are being monitored by the same attorney, the same actuaries as the general fund. And that, you know, those are things that can be worked out with the professionals, with choosing better investments or safer investments. You know, when the market goes bad, everybody loses. And so those funds were no exception from that. But those things can be worked on. That's something that is a concern. However, we have professionals that will be working on that.
Fifty-six percent of our budget is, is, is police and fire. It's not sustainable. When I was elected official previously, this has been a problem for a very long time. When I was in two thousand nine, two thousand and twelve, we started looking at the pensions and we knew then that we could not afford them. They would not be sustainable. But because, you know, election time, we have, you know, people that are promising or over-promising things and we can't deliver it. We have to look at what, what our future is going to be and how we're gonna be able to afford these. Fifty-six percent of our budget is a lot of money. We need to make sure that we come into compliance. Thank you.
All right, I'll hand the baton over to you in a second, Dan. Just want to clarify why we brought the subject up. And that is that, you know, everyone knows, we know, these are dangerous jobs. And these folks are entitled, men and women are entitled to make a decent wage. The wages are not high enough. When I suggested overly generous, I meant retirement benefits, not salaries. And the pension benefits for law enforcement and public safety employees need to be something that a city can afford. That was my point. Go ahead, Dan.
And my point, and my point is that we are, we, in the county, the city of Delray Beach, we are the third highest paying to our police and fire. So we're not, we're not at the low and we're not at the high. We're underneath, we're behind Boca Raton and the sheriff department, but we're not, we're not paying our bad salaries. Can we make sure they're increased? Yes.
As a point of clarification, you said that the public safety is fifty-six percent of the city budget. Is that not, spending about half of your budget on, on public safety, is that not actually fairly typical for most cities and the county that about half of it goes to public safety?
Well, I believe that maybe half of it can go, I mean, go to most cities. I'm not sure what other cities are. I just know that it might be even higher for our city than fifty-six and that's not sustainable.
We, we, I'm sorry, Dan.
Is it fifty-six percent or is it higher than that?
I think it's higher than that.
Okay.
I think it's higher.
We'll check it out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say something in terms of pensions. As I said, as a teacher, I, I served as a part of the union to fight for teacher salaries and fight for pensions. And had it not been for pension, right now, that is all I'm living off of, is my pension. I gave thirty-four years to the state, teaching, trying to make a change in the community. And I know how important pensions are. And whatever I have to do, lobbying, Tallahassee, and this situation is statewide. It's all over. So it's not just unique to Delray. But I will do whatever I can do to make sure that our police and our fire are taken care of.
Ms. Burns, a question about your campaign. Are you walking door-to-door in the district?
I am.
What are you learning?
Some of the same things that I was telling you before. As far as people wanting some change, people wanting to entertain. You know, people describe, and I've heard opposite this, the commission as toxic, that the whole aura, the whole, you know, the aura of the city is, is a, as a toxic nature. And people want to change. People want to see change in Delray. Delray is such a jewel of a place to live. We have people coming here yearly. We have over a hundred thousand people coming to the beach. And, you know, it's a great place to live and, you know, we want, we want nice. People want nice.
Ms. Gray, Angie Gray, have you been walking door-to-door in your campaign?
Yes, I have.
And what are you, what are you learning?
The same thing. People want, they want the overdevelopment. They want a- They want us to get control of that. Um, affordable housing. They need affordable housing. We need traffic and parking solutions. And our aging infrastructure that needs to be addressed. Those are the issues that are concerning to, to our residents, our business owners and our property owners.
Okay. Uh, back to you, Ms. Burns, for a second. This toxic commission, uh, which you described as, I, I don't, I don't doubt it. And, and we've, we've seen the news coverage of some, you know, slugfest meetings. But how much of this toxic environment is Shirley Johnson's fault, if any?
I don't think any of the, the toxic, uh, is Shirley Johnson's, um, fault. Um, uh, Shirley Johnson is very, you know, uh, quiet and laid back. Um, you know, people are not necessarily happy with her vote, you know. Uh, she has remarked, uh, several times that she's only one vote. But as you said very early in the interview, one vote can, can make the difference, um, in, in any situation. Uh, but I don't, I wouldn't say that she contributes to the toxicity. I, I wouldn't say that.
And Ms. Gray, I, I'm going to ask you the same question. Do you think, and I, I know it's, it might be a sensitive question. Uh, Shirley has served for a long time and she's at the end, nearing the end of her tenure. But if there's a toxic atmosphere at City Hall, I'm just trying to find out, is any of that Shirley Johnson's doing?
Oh, no. I think that, um, everyone has their own opinion about different things and they bring that to the city commission. I think that overall they disagree, uh, with each other, which is healthy. But overall, I think that the city commission works well together. I think that they've been able to get things done. I just think that they, they're strong about their feelings on whether it's overdevelopment or, or underdevelopment or housing or, you know, the city manager. Um, is, I just think that they just are strong about their opinions. I don't think it's toxic at all. You do need some diversity. I definitely don't believe that one person brings all that to the commission. Commissioner Johnson is not quiet by no means. She is very vocal about what she wants and what she wants to do. And, um, so no, I don't, I don't, I don't feel that it's really toxic. I think that people have different opinions, but our city is really ran real, really well. You're asking me, what have I learned? When I knock on doors, people, half of the people don't even know. They're happy. As long as there's not a lot of traffic, they could get to, they have good schools to go to. They could, um, you know, ha- find parking in our core downtown when they need to. People are generally happy in Delray Beach. Nobody is just rushing to leave here. I'm a real estate agent. I know this. I know that, you know, affordable housing is so important and those are the ca- the conversations that I have. And they're not about whether the, the city commissioner is getting along or not, but about what are they getting done.
Ms. Burns, are people generally happy in Delray Beach?
I think people say different things to different people. Uh, are they happy with the city? Yes. There, there, and, and there are a lot of people that are not. And, and those are the people, you know, when you get to, to be, you know, my age and your golden years, you want simple life. You don't want traffic. You don't want noise. Uh, you just want a simple life, uh, that's, that's, that's pleasant. You know, everybody wants a great quality of life. Uh, so, you know, there are some people that are leaving, but, um, I just, I get a different conversation. I get it. People are sharing different conversations, uh, when I, I've gone around and I've talked to many people.
Uh, Ms. Burns, I want to stay with you for a moment and ask this rhetorical question, a little bit of you, Ms. Burns. Uh, as Angie Gray pointed out, the city is going to, about to experience really unprecedented turnover at City Hall. Because of that, uh, experience is, and, and knowledge of, of the city and the city's challenges and the city's attributes, it's vital. And so that means that maybe the residents of Delray Beach are in better hands with someone like Ms. Gray who already has experience both at, at the city commission and on the CRA. What do you think of that idea?
I think that experience is great, but I also know that as a commission, that responsibility is just not left on a commissioner. There are five people on that DA's and the responsibility is to implement policy. And the, the citizens have just as much of, uh, a weight in what happens in their city, their taxpayers, as, uh, as the commissioner, the commissioner is just there to be the voice after they've listened to what the concerns are or what the city needs and to make sure that the budget is allocated, uh, properly. Um, I think that with my experience, uh, just in the community with over, you know, I've been in the, the fourth largest, uh, school district in the, in, in, in the state. And I have the experience or the know-how to solve problems, know-how to identify problems, know-how to listen to people. And I think that people in this community need that. You, you can't get to the point where you think you know everything and when you don't need plans and you know, you don't need this because you have all this experience. We have, um, professionals that are on our staff. We have a city manager and his staff, the assistant city managers. We have, um, expert staff that's hired to be the experts. Um, uh, the, 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 the knowledge or the, uh, institutional knowledge is not necessarily required to be a commission. Being able to work with people, to understand people's needs, being able to listen to people and being able to, uh, solve problems, you know, goes a long way, uh, when you're making decision and, and speaking up for people and being the voice for people that are not being heard.
Okay, we're coming up to the top of the hour. We really appreciate, uh, your participation. I'm going to give each of you about a minute to make a closing statement. Sort of a wrap-up statement. Uh, my predecessor, Rosemary O'Hara, called it an elevator pitch. If you were with somebody on an elevator and you, and you knew the elevator was about to stop on the 12th floor, uh, um, how would you most cogently make your, make your pitch for this, uh, for this seat, for this election? And we'll go in alphabetical order, so we'll begin with you, Ms. Burns.
All right, first on the, first on the ballot, Angela Burns. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm very, you know, want to do what I can for the city. I feel it's a responsibility to my grandchildren and to the many citizens of this community who do love this, uh, this city. Um, I want to lead Delray back to the collaborative and creative community which made our, our, uh, city a beacon for what other cities can accomplish. And then to speak on behalf of the citizens, uh, with over 30 years of leadership in the, this school district, you know, I know how to bridge divides. Sadly, for the last couple of years, Delray has been split into factions. Uh, longtime friends have found themselves separated by, uh, divisions encouraged by the current leadership. And I know that we can do better. So I encourage, uh, people and I, and I hope that I can get your, your trust, uh, to do what's right for Delray. Uh, vote Angela Burns, seat four, City Commission.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Burns. Angie Gray, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. Experience really does matter. Um, I served on the Palm Beach County Healthcare District Board with Dr. Alonzo. Um, and she had all the experience during a, that, that I needed to learn from. And also when I was a city commissioner, when I first came on, we have experienced people there. And as you know, in the next year, we could possibly have four new city commissioners and, and including the mayor. And we also have, um, a one-year, one-and-a-half-year city manager. Experience really does matter. It's so important to make sure that you have someone there that can at least help lead and guide a new commission, if possible. Um, experience matters. I have spent the last 15 years in my life giving back to the community I love. I previously served on the city commission and vice mayor. And, and as a vice mayor, I currently serve on the Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Experiences really does matter. I've been endorsed by, um, Saint Senator Bobby Powell, State Senator Lori Berman, County Commissioner Mac Bernard, County Commissioner Maria Sax, School Board Member District Seven Edwin Ferguson, Former Mayor Tom Carney, Former Delray Beach City Commissioner Alberta McCarthy, Former Delray Beach Commissioner Mitch Katz, Former Delray Beach Commissioner Jimmy Wetherspoon, Former Commissioner Gary Aliopoulos, and Former CRA Board Member Pamela Brinson. Experience really does matter. I've worked with all these people before. I've gone to Tallahassee and brought back funding from the city of Delray Beach. I could hit the ground running from day one. Remember, forget about the Angela's, Angie's, Angelita's. Go Gray for Delray. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you both for being here today. Uh, this has been a great spirited conversation. Uh, we, we want to sharpen the contrast, but also, and help voters make a very important choice, the future of this great city. So, uh, thanks, Angela. Thanks, Angie. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.